Call of July tenth. You try to say counsel for her, please rise.
I am. David. Call please.
Councilmember Byerly.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri, here. Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Public comments and requests.
I can't hear you.
I'm on South Fair East Street and I am the chair of the Clinton County Pride Alliance. Um, in the United States, on average, there are about seven point two percent of the population is in the LGBT community. You look at the numbers, that translates to in this county having just over twenty one hundred votes who identify as LGBT. Um, with that being said, I just want to thank city council for putting up the pride flag last month. Um, running the Pride Alliance Facebook page and that group, I can't tell you how many people reached out to us, thanking us, and we did pass on that it was not necessarily us that did that, it was the council. So people in this county, I feel unseen, and I just wanted to relay that to you. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
I have nothing submitted here, Your Honor.
Okay. With the other side.
Public comment.
Yes.
I'm Scott Johnson. I live in Solana, not a city resident or taxpayer, but I represent an organization in the city. And I just want to remind people that Regatta is coming up. It's, as always, we've been planning it. As always, in the beginning of the year, there will be some changes. I'm not ready to publicize that yet. It will be publicized during Regatta. And I would appreciate, I can't control, but we are no longer the J.C. Okay, this one.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. 4B, use of Zindel Park Rallying for Recovery.
Rallying for Recovery is requesting use of Zindel Park on August nineteenth for a five K, ten K race. Uh, the route is on the back. I will make sure that the city authority is okay with that route um and ensure that they get all the proper um paperwork in. Uh, we could do collectivities agreement with them as well, like we do for the Boulder Beast.
What's the which council?
I move approval.
Second. A motion to floor in a second. Any other discussion questions, comment? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. 4C, public hearing, consideration ordinance number twenty point three at zero six. Twenty twenty-three to death, zero six is an ordinance providing for the vacating of a portion of railroad street, a distance of approximately two hundred and seventy feet of that street. It is the portion that goes from Belfront Avenue to North Second Street. And that's all the farther it actually goes on on that particular stretch. It then continues up closer to East Campus of the university. This was submitted to the city through a public request, and the individuals who made that request are present here this evening. I do want to state to council before they have an opportunity to speak, under the third class city code, this will be the first reading, a public hearing will be heard on this a month from now at the first meeting in August. It will be advertised this week, next week, and the week after that for the public. Uh, the full ordinance appears in the newspaper, well, not just directing you to go look for it. Um, after that, twenty-eight days will have expired, which means that council can take it up on second reading. At that time, there will be a full public hearing for anyone who's interested from the public, as well as those who support, or perhaps maybe some people don't, um, come forward and make their case in front of council before council takes final action. I will say this, uh, strip of road was investigated by the Department of Public Safety, both the police and fire, believe that they can continue to perform their jobs effectively without losing this particular street. And Public Works also is able to utilize North Second Street, uh, because of its width, they're able to turn around at the end of it um and refrain from bowing Railroad Street. And finally, that portion of Railroad Street is short enough that it is not listed on the city's liquid fuels maps. The city does not receive any state funding for that stretch. Now, with that said, uh, Tom McMasters and Mark Drive appear this evening.
Probably familiar with it already, it's pretty tangible, but uh, so this is what it looks like, and I'll leave this to you.
I'm glad to.
Yeah, so, you know, the only butters are Mr. McMaster, uh, North Start, his company, has the property on the one side, the other side is just a railroad right away. Um, you know, the street's not irrigated, it's not particularly wide, it's a cartway, it's no curbbing or anything like that. Uh, there's, the intention would be for part of him finding the use of that lot. Uh, it would be for a parking or something similar, wouldn't be built over because there are another stormwater, uh, restoring facility uh within that that would be protected. Um, it's, it's, his observation that when you're coming off of that ancient railroad street to get onto, uh, uh, Belfront, it's actually a dangerous intersection. If you see, uh, we also submitted a, you know, survey, and you can see there's, there's obstruction, it's hard to see around it, so it's kind of a, it's not, it's got some dangers that would be eradicated. Um, the, uh, the other side is student housing, it's a parking lot there, access at the end of Second Street there. Uh, so it just seems to make a lot of sense, and, uh, and it would help, uh, the subvention and shape, uh, why to, to reach ultimately a more beneficial use than just the banded partners every time. As you said, it's two hundred and seventy feet, I, our survey showed it's two hundred and thirty-five, but I guess you go extend a little bit more. Um, it's good to hear that it wouldn't infect your liquid fuels, uh, safety vehicles in turn around. So, so that's, that's, that's what it is. If Mr. McMaster's here, or I haven't got questions right now, understanding that there'll be further here.
I might be the only person using that screen in the later basis. I don't want to pose.
Is, is the ordinance in, in fact, the ordinance have been published?
I'm sorry?
Is the ordinance that's in our pack here, is this the current version of the ordinance?
Uh, no, the current version updated the parcel ID numbers in paragraph A of section one.
I would like to make some changes, this will come as a surprise to you. And the intention, I think, is that the whole of this street will be vacated solely for the benefit of North Start. Okay.
Yes, although it is also our belief that, uh, if North Start can make more productive and beneficial use of the property, the community and the tax base is benefited as well.
And I wouldn't disagree with any of that. Um, but as it is very often assumed that when a street is repated, the use of it goes to both sides of the property owners, both sides of the I think our ordinance should make clear that that is not the intention in this case. Um, particularly since the property description mentions the center line of the right of way, which we, we got to suggest that there might be an issue with that. Important to know where the sector is.
We don't want to leave anything up in the railroads of purification.
But yeah, we don't want their truck on lifting it properly. Um, and I would prefer to see that the, that we have a full meets and bounds description of what is being vacated. Um, and getting north and south the other way around. Um, when it says on your hack area, Road Railroad Street twenty-two feet, what's the meaning of the twenty-two feet?
On the board map, that's what it's listed as. The width of the right.
Exactly, width, north to south.
Right.
Okay. So we could have a description that says, you know, starting at the, uh, what would it be, the northwest corner of the existing man of North Start, I make it two hundred and ninety-five feet to Belfront Avenue, and then southwest to the right of way, you back, you know, we know the data. If you have a complete meets and bounds, then we have essentially created taxable property. And we don't need any of those tax record ID numbers because they relate to North Start's existing property and not to what is being um, vacated, because that has moved. Um, so, you know, I'm sorry to nickel and dime, as I always do, but I think if we know exactly what it is, that is being implicated, and the beneficiary of that protection, then I think um, in years to come, people will understand what what is taking. In fact, and I don't think council is able to insist on it, but you might want to instead of having it elsewhere, do a new property description that incorporates this into what you already have, and would also eliminate that silly little square piece in the corner. You have one description for the whole of your property, it can be assessed as one property, and yeah, I think that would clean everything up perfect.
But they wouldn't want to do that until it was determined by council whether or not it is one of the big.
Oh, I think, yeah, I was just going to suggest that. You choose, but yeah, we'd rather not do that, we've been calling it this, makes me beneficial.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to make a condition, I don't think anybody really wants to quarrel with the intent here. I just want to make sure it's clear that.
So Mr. Moore, could you make a motion?
Um, I would be more than happy to move approval of this ordinance at first reading, the subject of the changes that I suggested.
Motion to floor.
Second.
And a second. And a question, your comments? Call for the votes.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Just that you just see.
Councilmember Brinker, we can't hear you if you're, if you're responding. Can you give me a thumbs up?
Uh, I'm a, I'm a staming.
Staming. Thanks.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, you need to state it. Can you, can you give us the reading, the extension, please? That has to be put in the minutes.
Uh, I just want to, uh, discuss things, I guess, more in an open forum without me being on the phone. Because I cut in and I cut out, so I'll ask questions at the next meeting.
Um, has to be a conflict of interest. Yeah, you can only abstain for a conflict of interest of some sort.
Okay, so now I'll just say no right now.
Okay, that's fine, thank you, and, and you can always change the next reading if you get.
Sounds great. Sounds good.
Do we have any other, uh, requests? We had those under requests. Uh, no, Your Honor. Okay, unfinished business. Five A, consideration of.
Forgive me.
Yes.
Did you say that the meeting is already done?
Correct. Five A, consideration of the execution of the agreement for route two twenty, item one eleven, call Matt LeDore. Uh, council considered this agreement, believe this will be the fifth time now, um, as you recall, the signers and co-signers switched back and forth a variety of times. This is the final version of the agreement, uh, so we have been promised. And so if, uh, council has already authorized the mayor and the clerk to sign the agreement, so council adopts the agreement this evening, that will be entered into and finalized. It is the same split as the current agreement that exists where the state bases there, uh, reverse is. Okay. Do I have a motion? I'll look at you, we're going to check that. Second and a second. Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes, five B, consideration pursuing the plan to build a new city police department facility at forty-five East Church Street. Forty-five East Church Street is the parking lot that is just across from City Hall. The, um, current proposal that is before council for exploration is to consider the building of a new police station in basically a quarter to a third of that parking lot. Um, this would be estimated six thousand five hundred square foot facility that would cost about two point one million. And that's based on the high end of the blue card, or on current estimates of three hundred and twenty-five per square foot. So in all hopes that would come in under that, uh, through the efforts of the city planner, the city's in a very strong position to receive up to a million dollar grant to apply towards this new facility's construction. And if that comes to fruition, which we will know that this year, then that would leave the city with just one point one million of the cost. And the city has more of that money, uh, towards city facility, uh, rehabilitation. And that would take care of the police department from inside this facility, the remaining staff, which is about nine offices. We would continue to pursue through D C E D a facility study that will also be looking at the library and see on any potential reuse of space there, additional space to be added there. So that would be currently what the kind of nine offices remaining would be on a back burner looking towards, uh, the results of that facility study. But, uh, this would put the project to go with a new independent police station across the street, then the sites of council as the way forward. Is there a motion? I'll move the project.
A second.
Motion to floor, a second. Comments, questions?
Well, I have a question. Essentially, this takes the police department out here and downstairs and puts them across the street.
Correct.
For two point one million dollars.
Correct.
How much will it cost to bring the police department up here?
I don't have that with me, but I did provide that to the council prior, uh, previously as one of the options. I believe it was bringing the police up here, but not, there won't be enough money to address any of the H V A C issue. Um, I believe was about one point six to one point eight. But there wouldn't be enough borrowing left to address H V A C.
Well, it wouldn't be enough borrowing left to address H V A C anyway. As you know, I'm one of the dinosaurs on this council who believe that you should take, take what you've got and make the best of it, even if you have to do it incrementally. Um, it's, it's a half a million dollar penalty to put the police department across the street to essentially just resolve the same issues that we could resolve by bringing them up here. And, um, and we still have an open question about what we would do with uh, the rest of the city. The, the question of, uh, repurposing the space under the library extension was walking about when I was on the, on the library floor. And again, it's a personal issue, but I have always found it very difficult to envision that rather looming and foreboding space as anything that would be an attractive location that people would work on. And, and again, that's another question. And when we resolve those two issues, we still have the question of what we are going to do with this building. Um, then we either leave it to crumble until somebody takes it up their hands, or we're still going to have to address some of the budgeting issues that sooner or later are going to turn around and bite us in the rear end. So I mean, frankly, not fervent with this proposal, but it will, it probably won't come to fruition on my remaining time on council, so I probably said more than I'm entitled to.
And, and my bigger concern frankly is this, that, uh, even if we, if it was one point six, one point eight, even if it was only a million dollars, and we moved the police to this floor, we do, we end up with the exact same building, the exact same facility with more offices on this floor and you got more people on this floor. It doesn't solve the problem of this structure having been left to go for decade after decade, city being approached a number of times to do something, and council member doing it. Uh, we did one thing in, in, in the, and I think it was at the very beginning of the, of the sixteen years that I was on council, so I'm partially to blame for this. But the fact of the matter is, we're in a position where we could potentially have, and a pretty, I mean, if I was a gambling man, I would gamble in favor of it, potentially get a million dollars towards this project, and I think that's a, a pretty darn good bet. Uh, so from my mind, we're building another facility for one point two, maybe one point two million dollars and getting the police into a, a very attractive, good work environment. I'm not, uh, I don't want to go to the work environment at this point. I don't, I don't know, talk about that, I, I, it's just frustrating me. And I just feel like a council member who for, for three to five years haven't been able to accomplish anything on this subject. And I just, I, I, I just feel, I feel like I'm partially to blame for not picking this board every time it came on the table.
And I would agree with you, I feel exactly the same way. Um, but we're, we're essentially in the school board issue, that we allow deferred maintenance that go and go and go to the point where we now spend a huge amount of money to do something that could have been achieved for less money if we.
And even when you weren't on council, you were attending, so you, you know, we.
Yeah.
I just want to add the million dollar grant, um, is for a new facility, it not be repurposed to do any rehabilitation years. I don't like, and obviously, made clear how I feel, that I don't, I don't like the plan, a plan that separates city government even further than it already is by, you know, giving these their own building and then moving more people to being spread out. Um, but also has, uh, sent people on for reason. Do we have any other com- comments, questions? All for the vote.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I think it's a win-win for taxpayers. Um, win-win, uh, for, in the sense that now we have two buildings, meaning Ross Library and City Hall. Um, and now we can consolidate new space that is not being used currently at the Ross Library, uh, to meet the needs, uh, there. I, I just see it's a win-win. It's less than the six point five or seven million dollars that we were talking about back last January when, uh, I came on council. Uh, so I think this is exciting opportunity for our town or, or police force, and it's a win-win, it's within our budget, and if we can get that million dollar grant, uh, I'm ecstatic. Um, I don't see any other way that we can do this. I think it's, it's just a great opportunity for, for everybody involved.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
No.
Uh, Mayor Law.
No. Five C, consideration resolution of point point three, that two zero. This is, once again, the ninety day, uh, closure, temporary closure for a portion of Sarah's Alley, which is a recent use Stella A Restaurant Main Street that they use for outdoor seating. This will last through October thirty, first twenty one three. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Five D, updating on Fire Department S C B A.
Chief Nutt. Thank you. My purpose tonight was to come and express our gratitude to council for allowing us to participate in this grant program, and Mr. Wilson as well, and that helped us get these S C Bs. We got a total of forty-seven, I brought an air pack and a cylinder and all, I thought more people were going to sit here, so I moved them, but I'll stay for after the meeting so you can look at them if you'd like, and I'll explain or answer any questions that you have. But we got a total of forty-seven air packs, forty-seven spare cylinders, and one ripped pack. And please don't quote the price information because I didn't, wasn't part of that, part of the grant, but it was somewhere in the four hundred thousand. But it was somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar range. That we got air packs for the, the city of Lock Haven and the taxpayers did not have to pay. Or what was it? Some thirty thousand dollars and that's that and five percent. Matching grant that we had to, that you provided to us for that. So, like I said, my purpose was to come and thank you for that. Here you want to go with the. With the federal money through the assistant firefighter grant program. And there were a total of eight, eight companies, three of us and then five others in the, in the county went together. And submitted a regional grant, which we got somewhere near. A million dollars. It was in the high nine hundred thousand to replace air packs for these eight, eight companies. And we received ours five weeks ago, the first Wednesday in June. And then the very next day, we were up on South Fairview Street at a fire using. So in, in the last month, we've used them like three or four times already. The brand new air packs and everybody loves them and they're working. And our purpose tonight was just thank you for allowing us to participate in the grant program and updated our. Equipment because we replaced fifteen year old air pack. And, uh.
Fun with you. I guess that would be staying. Rich. I'm going to.
Bye.
Is that your pack? Oh, okay.
It is. It's, it's one off the edge, but it's not mine. Okay.
So, thank you, thank you for the, thank you for taking care of it.
Of course, and I can show all of it.
To follow up with what Chief Neff said, there were eight companies throughout the county that participated. Uh. Many, many thanks to Dunstable. Because, uh, they took on the burden of being the man in the middle. Who normally that falls to the city to pay all the bills and then get reimbursed. So it was very kind that Dunstable was able to bear that weight a little bit as we came in one at a time to, uh, make our reimbursements. The. Capital improvement plans since I came here in twenty fourteen has listed that four hundred thousand dollar improvement every year. And the fact that this grant became available to that four hundred thousand dollar line item that we believed at the time we probably have to take out a loan for. And turn that into about a thirty thousand dollar expense for the city. So tremendous opportunity. Uh, really just nothing but a positive experience for our fire department.
Thank you. Do we have any other unfinished business?
I have none, Your Honor.
New business. Six A, appointment of Jacob Neff as full-time fire driver in training.
So speaking of the fire department, um, this is their evening. The chief who was just here. Has announced that he will be retiring on September third. So as part of transition for that. The fire advisory board. Received recommendations from hand in hand host company for the replacement of the full pack driver. And the fire advisory report, advisory board recommends to the city of Lock Haven, Jacob C. Neff as the qualified. Full-time driver to replace, uh, at the hand in. There will be some overlap in the two positions so that. He can learn for full task is, is a relief driver now. That's significant. Being the city's full. Having those responsibilities. So, uh, that is the first of. Three things to come before council. The council would take. Uh, action on that recommendation to appoint Jacob Neff. As the full-time driver and in hand home's company become effective on September third. And effective July twenty fifth, he would be the trainee for that.
Do I have a motion?
You have a point.
Anyone with a second?
Yeah.
Second. Thank you. Further discussion, anyone?
All for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes. Six B, establishing the appointment of fire chief of the city of Lock Haven.
This is an appointment that would become effective September fourth, twenty twenty-three. And this is to appoint Jacob Neff, the who, who will be the full-time driver for hand in hand. As assistant fire chief and this appointment, uh, then would place the following personnel into these positions. Tyler Woody would be fire chief, Eric Brungardt, deputy fire chief, and Jake Neff, assistant fire chief.
What's wish count?
I move that we approve this.
Second. Motion for a second. Discussion question.
All for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes. Six C. Notice of the appointment of chief Tyler Woody. Fire administrator in training.
You'll notice that the fire department's a bit like Don has. So, uh, with the retirement of Chief Neff. Uh, I will be appointing Tyler Woody, who is the chief at whole host company. To take on the roles that the fire administrator does. The fire administrator is more like the, uh. Paperwork pusher of the fire department for the city. So they do keep track of the full-time drivers. They handle payroll, they handle the investigations, things like that. So it's more the administration. Aspect of the fire department than the actual firefighting. So Tyler will take over for Bob at that position.
Okay. Six D, consideration of resolution number twenty point three, that twenty-one.
Before you give the resolution for, uh, the national fitness, for a fitness sports studio and associated funding. Uh, the spending for it applied to the war. Grant through campaign, we were. But match of two hundred thousand dollars is required for. Equipment. So we need to care of her. Uh, we started these. And maybe two hundred thousand dollars. How they do sponsorship. We've been in court have made up of. Files like full page search files, which can show logos and anything else sponsored. So we're offering, um, anyone who will join the project. Do the file with their logo and the source, uh, to of course the funding. Um, the, the court in general, which are easier built and exercising for the. Um, and the other side is blank space for, you know, the award. What do you think to be of the compoles of work for them? To be. Sponsors and other funding opportunities. Um, I also mentioned earlier at the G public hearing that we will look to if there's anything else in the budget to. On the report. Um, of course, we want to, so that's for the. So that's G can be used for. I also want to add before. Close this out, we are, this is the first part of Hannah Park renovation. We are opening up a survey for. Um, residents to respond to or ideas on what they would like to have in the park. Um, we know there's. Involved with. Pretty located in the support. Um, this, they just were not coming about, so there are a few items that we know are there. And we're looking for it, but, um, two hundred. Um, it will be about. And we're looking for construction at Hannah Park. Um, in twenty twenty-five, so we have four years to work. Um, I just recommended approval for this resolution, so we can say we have.
Go ahead, Mike.
The move.
Second.
Motion for a second, very quick.
Yes.
Ms. Roberts, if we don't come up with the two hundred thousand dollars to match for thirty. Do we give that thirty back or are we committed to having to do this? One way or the other.
Um, we can, we can always turn it back, but I will say that, um. When the timing's right, I can apply this year, but next year, I can apply reviews can aren't. Um, to match those five as well. So there are other options. Uh, but of course looking for the basis for sponsorship.
Yeah, I don't see two hundred thousand in my budget to. Uh, you know, you know.
Nope.
No.
All for the vote.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm still here. I'm still here.
Go ahead.
Uh, so the thirty thousand only goes towards this, that's correct. Not towards any other projects. Towards yoga, towards this yoga fitness center, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Um. Yeah, I'm not, as, as a fitness guy, I love fitness. Um. I'm just really not sure how many people are going to use the yoga mats and. Uh, the strength training exercises. I see them in a lot of old parks. And they're not being utilized much, uh, so for to come up with two hundred thousand dollars additionally through sponsors. It might have some other needs like Steve. Uh, might have mentioned there, um, in our parks, then. Yoga mats and some fitness centers. So just, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Did you catch, you wanted to make a comment? Anything else before I ask the voting?
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
No.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes. Six E, request for additional funding in Lock Haven area flood protection authority.
I received a letter from the chair of the Lock Haven area flood protection authority, and I see council members received the copy. Their boxes as well. Uh.
Who's that?
Most did, uh, Steve did not, but I assume if you attend the meetings that you probably had a heads up. But the flood authority has requested an additional one thousand five hundred dollars in funding for this year. Uh, there was one thousand five hundred in the budget this year that was paid to the authority on February thirteenth. Um, they apparently have expended that and are requesting an additional one thousand five.
Motion, Count.
Being that it's part of our responsibility to fund the flood protection authority. And they didn't list their actual expenses and they, uh. Have some bills to pay now. That the fifteen dollar, hundred dollars is not out of the way. To. Simple budget slide movement.
Go ahead.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Further discussion, you seem like you want to say something.
I do, yeah. And I, I just want to clarify, it is in the budget. You didn't pay fifteen hundred. That was the budget.
Yeah.
So this is an additional fifteen hundred over budget, so that'll come from the, this general one, one balance.
Yeah.
Clarification. And the discussion.
Hold on, hold on. There's only one point. Um, sequestered fund money for the E M S. Did they ever come and say it?
No, they have not yet. I did have like, uh, at least twice additional discussions with, uh, Lock Haven EMS, but they. Uh, haven't ever come back again.
Anything else?
No.
All for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Wong.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? I, I should have asked this at the manager and I didn't. So they, they use the same auditor we use.
They do.
Are we, do we submit at the same time or the employees outstanding are separate audit?
It's a separate audit that they pay for. They can bid that out to any company. They don't have to use the same ones.
Yes.
Six F. Notice of hiring.
Uh, Carter Simcox has been hired as planner one, which is the assistant city planner. Working under the direction of planner and development coordinator. Abby Roberts, the. Resume of part of this, but we're escaping me for a minute. I haven't needed it. Uh, the resume has been providing to council. He, uh, does have a bachelor in science degree in building some sustainable design. And attended the Pennsylvania College of Technology, recently graduated from that. Architectural Technology Program. If, uh, you ever have an opportunity to stop in his office, he now has brought in some of the work that he worked on over the past several years. And so there's some great schematics, but models in there as well. But, uh, has a heavy interest in sustainability and. Already has been assigned several projects by the city planner that will kind of become the, the go-to person. Lot of great money out there. More hands mean more money.
Any other new business, Rick?
I have none, Your Honor.
And yeah, the fire reports. Your base fund, I'm basically moving along.
They are, they're still on target, I guess, to be completed during the month of September. Which will be awfully nice.
I can collection results. One council, I need to report. What was it, me? Does anyone have anything else to report, Council?